It is now six o'clock and we're going to call the meeting to order. I'll start with a prayer and then the pledge. And my father, we just thank you for this great weather, great day you've given us. I want to lift up the Hantacrat family, the boss, the 911 director, just be with that family going through this time of sorrow. Pray for the people of our community that are sick. Pray for healing. Pray for the lonely. Just give them some encouragement. People around this table, I just pray we give everybody wisdom and what's best for the city. All this, I pray through Christ on that.
Amen. The United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, you want to welcome everybody?
Mar.
Here.
Bassett.
Here.
Beverly.
Here.
Agnew.
Here.
Glover.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Yeah, before you, the June 19 regular council meeting minutes and corrections, questions. Make much to provision. Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Martin.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Glover.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Harv.
Yes.
Agnew. Yes.
Again, before you, the bills. Any questions?
I have a question. Water treatment plant that blower motor. Somebody told me that the three blowers went down.
That would have been number three.
It was number three. There wasn't all three of them that went down.
Well, one of them's out in Pennsylvania that's getting rebuilt. One of them is seized up, so they're running on this one, waiting for the second good one to come back from Pennsylvania.
So there were two blowers down.
No, no more we don't. We had all three down for about 24 hours.
Did the gearbox lock up? Is that what I was told?
On?
One of the blowers?
Potentially, yeah. It's going to go to Scott Conley's going to dig into it and help them rebuild it for us.
But didn't we just get it rebuilt?
No, we had three. One's still in Pennsylvania. It should have been here like two weeks ago. So when that gets back, we'll put that one in, so we'll have two. And then the one that's tied up now will go over to Conley.
You didn't, there weren't any electric motors, those 200 horse motors, none of those went bad?
Yeah, that's what we just replaced.
Not gearboxes, motors.
Right. So we got, picked one up, we found one in Toledo. They left out, found one close to home in Toledo, put that in. Old one's out and it's going to go back to the same place in Toledo and they're going to rebuild it with the motor. And then it'll set in the blower building as a backup.
Did we feel these went bad from where or from some second bite?
I want to say both. I mean, they were all put at the same time, so hopefully it's, that's three blowers and now one motor, so.
You're going to have a spare one when it's all set and done.
Yep.
Which is good.
A spare motor, not a spare blower.
Yeah, right.
Then we got a $632 hitch for 2004 of 350.
Yeah, the one that was on there was a, I think it was a class three maybe, but it was just pretty rusted and we got that new chipper and just it bent the neck that comes out on it, bent that down. So that got modified and then the two that went from the brackets from frame rail to frame rail started to twist and bulge out. So this is a class five here that will take an additional weight.
And street sweeper brushes? We buy a lot of them, don't we?
Twenty-one, I think, is the last time we bought.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
Oh, but.
Late 21.
But they're burning the street, there shouldn't be white marks from stones where those things swirl.
I don't know.
I do. I'm not around them.
I don't know, I don't really know how often the brushes were replaced prior to the outbreak. It could have been every year, every other year, I'm not sure.
And we're doing it every year and sometimes a couple times a year.
I can say I haven't seen a street sweeper out a lot more recently than what it has been in years past, but the new one will be shooting for a vacuum style instead of the mechanic.
Well, one of the, one of the guys is no longer with us. He was in it so much that he was getting his mail delivered. But yeah, I just wanted to touch bases on those. I just, it looks like a lot of money for a little bit.
The Kentville group?
The Snow Flower Repairers, Skid steer tracks, adjuster train, those tracks are pretty well shot.
Yeah, those are from the wastewater treatment plant, skid steers.
Okay, that's not the street, that one's up here.
No, those, those are getting pretty worn down and they're getting really sloppy and kind of hitting the housing, I guess, of the skid steer itself. So those will be budgeted for next year. I think it's fifty, $500 or a new set of rubbers for it.
Do you know what the hardest thing is on a skid steer track? Driving, you know, high speed on hard surface. Don't we have, still have a trailer for that thing somewhere? Put under that trailer.
I just sold that, that old thing.
Old thing, brand new.
Maybe it's 77, I don't know. I don't know when it was new. I mean, the deck was rotted, the frame was completely twisted on it.
Any other questions on the bills?
I have a quick question. The well field, Brian Excavating, Orpman, those two, is that the final payment on that project or?
No, not yet. Trying to hear. Brian Excavating, we've had seven invoices. The balance of that is still $66,872. That total was $1,253,849. Orpman has had five invoices. Balance for Orpman right now is $89,752.75. Their portion of the project was $434,000 by 43.
Another one, Werler for sledge, a bunch of work if you grant to pay to get rid of sledge. $32,000. Werler on first page.
About a six point, not seven point. That was, that was a portion of, I think we had like a $30,000 purchase order that was like rolled over from last year, we used to use for public services. I'm going to say for this year, you had probably maybe another $8,000. So that'd basically be two years worth. We are trying to get some farmers to take some of that product as well.
Okay, any other questions on the bills?
Make most paid bills.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Mar.
Upstate.
Bassett.
Yes.
Beverly.
Two.
Agnew. Yes. Glover.
Same.
Martin.
Yes.
Okay, next on the agenda, Erica Bulitzer.
Finance County Economic Development Director.
Well, good evening.
Hi.
I'm going to do a quick update of just different things that our team has been working on in Hicksville. So we have been working on three different company expansions from an industrial aspect here in Hicksville. Two of them are not announced. One of them is APT Manufacturing, if you've heard about that. So we're working on the legislation with APT Manufacturing for an enterprise zone agreement. So here in a month or so, I'll be coming back to ask for support for a resolution for that to submit with their application to the state. In about, with those expansions and the timing, within three years, three to five years, we should see around 120 positions with those expansions that we're working on. Now, keep in mind, there's two that are not announced, things can change, but we're working that we can stay on that, that track. With that, as you guys all know, is the housing component that the mayor and I have been working on. And I would tell you that we've met with different developers. I've been meeting with developers, we've been reaching out to developers, and there's a common thread of what they say to us. And that is, we can go to Fort Wayne, we can go to Perrysburg, and we can make twice as much, sometimes 30% more. But when it comes to our area, it's just, it doesn't make sense. And so I met with a Perrysburg developer and just really, he was a nice man and was able to pick his brain a little bit. And I said, what do we need to do? What do we need to do? He goes, it really needs to, truly needs to be a partnership with municipalities. So there needs to be a TIF, tax increment financing, where they help with the infrastructure if you want to get housing. So that sounds extremely scary to any municipality when you hear that. So what we're doing at Mommy Valley Planning is we are actually doing a study of, you know, that upfront cost and then in five, 10 years, what would the payback be if we had families coming and live in, let's say, 50 new homes? In 10 years, what's that going to mean in sales tax and real property? So we're, we're doing those, that study right now, actually. I talked to Will earlier today and he said he was close to that getting done. So once I, we get that information, I don't, I don't want to do anything that's risky in that, you know, in that way. So we're, we're trying to do a study to see if that could be something that looks like it would be a smart move for municipalities throughout the county. So that's something that we're working on. In addition to that, in the 90s, which I think was, I want to say it was the 90s, Hicksville and the Defiance County Economic Development put together like this brochure. So we have some, some online stuff that we have promoting Hicksville, but I think with the new mural, we're going to update those and redo some of the marketing that we give to some, to our housing developers and to our industrial leads. So that's something that our team is working on currently. And then I wanted to give you an update on the spec building. As you guys all know, that's been stalled and I want to give a quick update. So we are waiting for the tower company to get, to waive the rights to the land so that Keller Development Group can, can go there and build a spec. But in addition to that, we are also asking for them to move the easement that went up the middle off to the side. So where the water tower is now, it would go up that lane right there. We're having, Troy knows this all too well, a lot of difficulty getting, hearing back from the tower company. I know the last exchange was two weeks ago. So we are, every week, that is on my list of reaching out and seeing if we could get some response. So the, some of, some of the other issues, when it rains, it pours, you know it, it's just, so if that wasn't an issue enough, found out, when we, when we first started this whole entire venture, that easement did not have fiber in it. But apparently in December of 2022, Verizon ran a fiber line in there. So now we've got that, now we've got another company to deal with. Here's the good news. And the good news is, is that we've got Rick at SMTA who's done a lot of work, groundwork already, and I know the mayor and Cory have worked with him as well. He's already went and done drawings and sent them to their engineers saying, hey, if we get this waiver, we get these waivers, will you sign off? They've said yes. There's another layer to it too, Comnet, which is like the, if you're thinking from our utility standpoint, like electric, it's like the transmission component for broadband. He's already submitted to them too. Yep, as long as we get the waiver from the tower company, we'll get this signed, signed off. So that's where we're at now. We're still waiting, but I will tell you, I'm very impressed with SMTA's CEO and trying to help us make this work and get this going. So still, that's the weekly thing that I touch upon. And then another thing I wanted to talk about is just secrets to landing companies and helping them with their expansions. Mainly it's location. And I think Hicksville is located in a really good place because you're, you know, right, right outside, you're like, you're right outside of Fort Wayne. So that's fantastic. The other thing is following up, being a welcoming community and a supportive community. And I know that that is something that Hicksville does well as, well too. And then speed to market is vital. And I say that because we have already lost three major projects because that could have went into that Hicksville spec building. But because we had all these mishappenings happen, then we missed out on some opportunities. So speed to market is critical and that goes for all businesses, including small businesses. And so, so there's that point. The other thing too is I know the revolving loan fund committee here in Hicksville, they, how it works is our office, we are marketing your revolving loan fund. And then once we get it, we get the application, we send it to Will, Will sends it to the committee. A lot of times I'm helping in the background with Will, getting, getting the proper documents. I will tell you that that committee does a great job vetting. There's been several companies that have tried to get stuff and they've said no. But I know that, I think on your docket potentially tonight is Hard Press Coffee. And Hard Press Coffee, they, they've done, I would say above and beyond what normally a small business, business does. They, she has actually vetted her entire site here in Hicksville. She's done the pop-ups, she's thumbed out when, when traffic times hit are perfect for, for monetizing. So she's done a lot of work there and then her financials look very good. And she has bank support and she's requesting revolving loans. So I would, I would ask that you support that. Remember the speed to market is, is very crucial because companies can then up and lead. And so like why, why are small businesses critical? They are when it comes to landing industrial companies and clients. So I would say five years ago, these industrial companies would come in, they'd bring their executives, they never cared about anything pertaining to restaurants, quality of life, trails. Now, when I'm pitching to companies, I am required to have what the community is all about, where the coffee shops are, where the, what the restaurants are like. So when I am talking to people that are interested in coming to Hicksville, I include all of that in my pitches with these companies. So I just wanted to kind of give you a sneak peek of some of the things that we're working on. There's probably more than that, but I really am excited about the future of Hicksville. I think there's a lot of things happening and I, I love, I love where I live because I'm seriously five minutes away from Hicksville, 10 minutes away from Defiance, I'm right up the road from Sherwood. So I can, I go to all the communities and I always love coming to Hicksville. Any questions for me? Or are you going to give me a heart attack? No. That tower, if I remember correctly, the way the contract is written, they can walk away and we can walk away. Why don't we walk away? Tell them to get your stuff and get out. Try it.
Yeah, I don't believe that. It's like, there's a timeframe.
They have first right of refusal.
And they have first right of refusal while the stuff's in place, but I think that was one of the options I said, but that I think, didn't we check, is there like two years or, there's like two years or something locked on it. At the end of the two years, we could not renew it and it would go away, but that's not helping us get something in. That's not helping us now.
For some reason, I was thinking that they had so many days, they could tell us they were leaving. I would love that.
There's timeframes in there like that, but it said prior to the expiration of the then existing term or something. So then I can't remember whether it's in five-year terms as I remember.
Yeah. Troy works, has worked really hard on that too. It just feels like we're hitting, hitting roadblock after roadblock with the tower company. And it's not, financially, it's not worth it to this community. What they pay and peanuts. Well, hopefully we'll get some movement here soon. We're not giving up and what are they, what's that saying, the squeaky, what is it, the squeaky wheel? Yes. So with that, we are certainly annoying to them.
Brian's committed.
Yes.
Yes, I talk to him every month, CIC, he's on board. He's not planning, may be built till next spring, early or?
Yeah, he has delayed it because of this, of circumstances.
But he assured me he's committed.
He is.
So I talk to him every month.
In regards to housing component, talking about TIFs, I mean, is that something that like, when you were talking with the Perrysburg developer, that if the village was supportive of a TIF, like he would be committed or he's asking for more commitment out of the local communities?
No, like, so when, when we talked to the Perrysburg developer, and we were just talking general in the county, that in order to get his team to the table, like, and research and do, start doing the plans, the community would have to say, yes, we, we would do a TIF.
Yeah.
But I don't, I feel like we need to do our due diligence on the backend to make sure that that's.
Well, I mean frankly, it's a TIF sufficient.
Correct.
In Hicksville, you know, you obviously have to sell houses.
Yeah.
For that to pay back, so. I was just curious kind of how the conversation.
No, you know, if I had another conversation with them too, I would be more than happy to have the mayor and you guys around because I mean, I think it's worth exploring and seeing if it's a good avenue. I know at this day, there's been talks of doing some other things too, so I'm trying to keep a pulse on that, like if there's going to be monies available for that. But it's a need across the, across the country, so. Just kind of throw this out there. I have, I've been in contact with some builders and there's one, he suggested we donate the land and I'm just putting it out there. So think about it, it might be something. And we could, so we, we, at our office, we just got also with the help of Mommy Valley Planning, but we also got this new economic development software. So keep this in the back of your mind if something comes up, where we can, we can plug in projects. We can even plug in projects in the reverse. So like if a company is leaving, what that impact would be, company's coming, or if a housing addition is coming, what that looks like. And we can, we can do all the numbers of what the impact would be five, 10, 15, 20 years out. So we, yeah, so I'm excited about that. We just got that last week.
Any other questions for Erica?
I want to thank Erica for the time you put, give to Hicksville and I know you give to the county and other villages and the cities and the county, but she's on top of things. I mean, I'm very thankful that you're looking out for all of us.
Well, I like Hicksville. I love Hicksville. I, like I said, I come here often with my, not just as doing work, I, I come here for play too.
Okay, next Erica. Okay, boards and commissions, I don't think. Council committee reports. No meetings? Administrator report?
Water tower, they showed up today. There was a few things the inspector wanted adjusted on the tower, so they were, they're working on that. Hopefully before the week's over, they can get started on the painting. Painting will go through the month of August, so when that's completed, they'll have the logo and everything on it. The well field officially been started up. It's been a couple of days last week. There's still some kinks to work out with some of the telemetry units that are in there. Maple Lane's been completed, substantially completed. Paving is to be August 15 by Ward Construction. Ward paving will be doing that along with Benson doing all the yard restorations. A few things in the park, the curving that we discussed there at Froggy Park, those have been sealed off or hopefully that will prevent water from pulling off of our property onto the neighbors.
Can I ask you a question on that?
Yeah.
Have we heard anything from him?
Not a peep.
That's good.
Not a peep.
Thank you.
Metal Lane had another service line rupture. That was repaired back on July 5th. Volleyball courts have been, have been moved, the light poles, we took the lights off today, off, off the poles, so we can save those. Now it's, we're going to determine how we want to put those poles in, whether we knock the concrete off and put them back into the ground or pour some concrete bases with some, some studs sticking out to bolt the poles down to. Hopefully that'll be completely done over the next couple of weeks. We have a walkthrough with Six Mo and any potential bidders for the pool and splash pad on July 24th at 1:30. Choice One has started with the designing and layout of the East Cornelia Rock Street Water Main Replacement. That'll include some hydrants and I think there's three or four, there's three or four balances as well that are getting replaced. We did get $170,000 from OPWC, $314,000 by 60 is something that was budgeted for this year for this project, so that's, that's nothing to be worried about there. And then the 200 horse electric motor that was, that was replaced. And I'm still waiting to hear back with some hard numbers for the two dump trucks. And then we did, our street department had five interviews on Friday and all, all pretty good candidates. I did get with the mayor and gave him my recommendation, hopefully we should hire for that.
I'll do that now.
Yep. It was myself and Troy had interviewed everybody, Cheryl was involved with his interview process. This gentleman by the name of Jacob Huffman, who lives here in town, is who I would recommend for hire.
Okay, I'll make that recommendation. I checked out with Cory, recommend we hire Jacob Huffman.
He has a construction and equipment background in the CDL?
He does not have a CDL. Nobody that we had interviewed had a, had a CDL. He graduated high school in 2017, took automotive mechanics, then a mechanic out here at the Schmitz. Good young kid. Good head on shoulders.
He's going to get his CDL on the right.
Probably gets six, gets six months.
Okay. Any other questions?
Which, the outfitters, new truck, new dump truck, like is what trucks you referring to?
Which truck?
Yeah.
The two, what does GM call them? 3500s?
That we already have?
Yeah, to replace our two old.
You're getting two new trucks?
Yeah.
Two more new trucks?
Replacing the 2000 and the 2004 through the enterprise.
Through the lease, right?
Yeah. That's what all this is for, to do that enterprise.
I'll entertain a motion to accept Huffman to be hired.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Who's the second?
I didn't, we just come here.
Beverly.
Here.
Martin.
Yes.
Glover.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Agnew. Yes, sorry.
Yes.
And I did attach some updated stuff from zoning department with disabled junk vehicles and then a few properties that have been tagged, renewed some properties as well.
That's quite a list. Mine on there.
Not here.
So the tag properties, what's that mean?
They didn't have the condemned list.
Promoting.
Okay. Okay, any questions for the administrator?
I got it. You said after you did the Maple Lane project, you were assuming through all the studies and everything, here's the water flow coming since we've got everything backed up. You had mentioned you were going to look down some lines during rain events and see if it was really blowing through there. Have you had a chance to do that? I was kind of holding.
Yep.
It was meter.
Yep, it went on Saturday. We were out a day prior to that. There really wasn't anything coming in the sanitary, in that manhole and cul-de-sac. There was a slight trickle from, I guess it'd be the north side coming in. There was a, it was a sump pump. I don't know really, we don't know what it was, but before that thing would just have rushing water through it. The storm line, the, the manholes in there, they were full of water and there, it was flowing quite a bit of water in that storm sewer, so.
That was all I did behind the project, right?
Okay, any other questions for the administrator?
By the way, how many breaks is that now? It seems like, is that two or three in the last, what, two years, year?
It's been here a little over two and that's two, three or four years, yeah.
It seemed like a lot just in that. Are they all kind of in the same area that people break in or?
Best street.
Counted out there.
Yeah, this one, this one was on down where, oh gosh, what was her name, Savage? Savage. It was that, it was their service line that, that broke.
So are we, are we actually replacing their laterals?
We're, we're just, we're putting new pipe in there, I mean, we're not going clear to the main.
But within their lateral? So why, I guess, why are we repairing their lateral?
Because we're responsible up to their curb out there.
Oh, it's in the curb.
Their, their meters are in their homes.
So the leaks, the lines were actually in between the curb stop and the?
The main, yes.
Okay.
There were times that we'd get water, we're open, and everybody did, that's where it is, so.
What, in terms of how we got the OPWC money for the East Cornelia Rock Street Water Main Replacement, what, like what were the qualifications that allowed us to get that versus like, I mean, could we submit that project to hopefully get funds to help supplement the replacement cost of that fundamentally?
Addition. Potentially, Kent would actually, you know, good thing he's here, he would know a lot more about the OPWC.
Yeah, the, I did the OPWC grant, that was one of the last things that he did, and it scored well enough for population, the number of breaks, and, and that's the, the service lines that wouldn't qualify for OPWC. Your best bet on that would be the small CDBG grants. Wouldn't have trouble with the main, okay?
No, that's, that's the thing, you know, with the main on Cornelia, yeah, when that goes down, yeah, we're setting up quite a few homes to, to do, to do those repairs, so. With the service line, it's just usually one at a time, so. I would love to go in there and just run all new copper, call it good, but. Yeah, like Kent said, it'd be good for a CDBG, and we've got three of them out right now that we've applied for this year.
And those are for which projects?
Those are for which projects? It was Water Main and resurfacing of Chicago Avenue. Water Main from Westwood High Street, the demo of the water tower, and I think there was six or seven water valves that carried over from the 16 over that last year.
Can you remind me what that time period is that that can sit vacant or unused before the house come down?
This year?
Yeah.
Top. It here. I mean, it, it can, it can sit there as long as it gets inspected, and we did just have it inspected, but hopefully spring next year it comes down. That's, that's the goal.
Goal.
Okay, good questions, any more?
With all of your new kind of employees you got working for the departments, are they working out well?
Yes.
Satisfied with?
One more question, sorry to take you, the water tower, the March radio, do we know where that's at, the construction of that?
I don't.
Did, how does that follow along with fire department communication, and the water tower coming down in the spring?
Well, spring is, is hopeful, but obviously it's going to depend on when, when they can get their tower up, down at the fairgrounds, right?
They're drilling, my understanding, possibly starting to drill on Thursday.
So they didn't find any historical or documentary thing?
No, no, it's ready to go, then start building.
Okay.
So, it sounded like they're going to start drilling on Thursday, start moving ahead. As far as the note, they were still on their timeline to be done by February.
Oh, okay.
That's cool, so.
Okay, that's all I got. Any other questions? Thanks Cory. Solicitor's report, Troy?
First thing I have is a third reading by caption only, ordinance 2023-12, an ordinance vacating an unnamed street right of way as platted in Houston subdivision, running between Lot 9 and Houston subdivision and Lot 339 of Rogers, Platte, to the Village of Hicksville.
Third reading, so I entertain a motion. Any questions for we?
So move.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Mark?
Yes.
Bassett?
No.
Beverly?
Yep.
Egling?
Yes.
Klepper?
No.
Martin?
Yes.
Next is first reading of ordinance 2023-14 by caption only, and ordinance to amend the annual appropriations ordinance and declare an emergency.
Is that reimbursement? I'll second that.
Roll call.
Egling?
Yes.
Klepper?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yep.
Bassett?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Second, third readings, ordinance 2023-14 by caption only, and ordinance to amend the annual appropriations ordinance and declare an emergency.
So move. Second. Roll call.
Mark?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Klepper?
Yes.
Egling?
Yes.
Next is resolution 2023-12, a second reading by caption only, a resolution of the Village of Hicksville, Ohio, authorizing the revolving loan fund committee to enter into a loan agreement with Hard Press Coffee LLC and declare an emergency.
Make much, suspend the roll. Second. Second. Roll call.
Egling?
Yes.
Klepper?
Stay.
Martin?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
So, third reading by caption only, resolution 2023-12, a resolution of the Village of Hicksville, Ohio, authorizing the revolving loan fund committee to enter into a loan agreement with Hard Press Coffee LLC and declare an emergency.
So move. Second. Roll call.
Beverly?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Egling?
Yes.
Klepper?
Stay.
Martin?
Yes.
First reading, a resolution 2023-13, a resolution declaring necessary levy and additional tax for fire protection in the Village of Hicksville, requesting the Fines County Auditor to certify the total current valuation of the village and the dollar amount of revenue would be generated by the additional levy and declare an emergency. Yeah, this is a cleanup, there's some, they just, at the end of last year, kind of tweaked the way the language had to be in there, so we, we passed that out on, we had to adjust this in order to make sure we satisfied the, the new language. And basically, the process is, as we talked about before, we need to do this, that gets sent to the auditor, and then she sends the information we requested, I think it's 10 days, she has to send that, and then because of the timing, because we pushed this back at this point, at the next meeting is the meeting that, once we get that information, I assume Cheryl circulated, but at the next meeting is when we'd have to decide by resolution if we were going to put something on the ballot, because it has to be done 90 days before November, if we calculated that date, it's like August 9th or 8th, as I recall. So, this is basically the same thing we've been talking about, if you'll see, there's, they changed things as minor as you, writing out the numbers instead of using the words for like 100,000, putting the numbers, and it's all designed so that when it goes on the ballot, hopefully the people that look at, look at it will be able to easier assess in, you know, in their minds, how much it would cost them if it's passed and things like that, so there's about four or five different places where the words had to be converted to numbers. Another thing that I, off the top of my head that sticks out is, is they changed the wording instead of, let's see if I can find it on here, I think the term they use now is taxable value, and before it just used to say valuation per so much valuation, now it says taxable value. So we, like I said, cleaned that up, but if, this is not anything that's committing the levy to go, you know, to go on, we still, we need to do this so the auditor can give us our information, that she kind of preliminarily had already provided, as I understand it, right? Before we started this. But then that'll be the official one, and that's important, because if we do pass a resolution to put it on the ballot, then that's something that has to be attached to that resolution, so that the Board of Elections has it as part of the levy process, so that is a necessary part of it.
This is what you already passed at the last meeting. We had to put new wording in because Jill got it and she said no. She didn't like the wording, she rejected it. So, she rewrote it with all the right words in it. Now we have to go back to her and see if she'll accept it, if we'll pass it tonight.
And from my vantage point, it's not really, I mean, she pointed it out, but it's not up to her to accept it, I mean, it's up to her to certify what we've asked her to certify to us, theoretically, at the end of the day, would be up to the Board of Elections whether to accept it or not accept it, so we do need to have the proper, yeah, we do need to have the proper language in there, so that when it gets to the Board of Elections, they don't say, you got everything in order, but this is the problem.
Motion to suspend. Second.
I'll send it.
Roll call.
Mark?
Yes.
Bassett?
No.
Beverly?
No.
Egling?
Yes.
Klepper?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Two no's, so that's enough to suspend it?
So what does that mean?
That means we're not going, well.
That means it can't go?
Sure, having a very quick special meeting, or having a special meeting at some point to have a third reading and do it, that there's not enough time to get it on the ballot.
That's pretty much what that means.
Yeah, pretty much.
Our next meeting is the seventh.
Is soon enough, but that's the time, that would be the last time we could pass the next, and we wouldn't have the information that we needed, because she has 10 days under statute to get the information to us. Next is resolution 2023-14, it's a first reading by caption only, a resolution author, authorizing the village administrator enter into a lease agreement with Enterprise Fleet Management for vehicle replacements. And that's what the presentation and everything have been on up to this point.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Yep. Any questions for the solicitor? Okay, Department has, Police Chief?
I don't have any other. We just talked about the Martin tower.
Okay. How's the officer?
Well, this is only his first week, so.
Under training, right?
Yeah, yeah, he's in training this week for forensic interview, and then. I guess his first three days were adventurous, I guess, so. The shooting call, and, so, but, yeah.
I have nothing either, Mayor.
Okay. Park Director, anything on the park? Are you on the, we don't have a park department, okay.
I called about, they had a big All-Stars turn on here, what, two weeks ago, last week? Or foot, like, I checked the valley, said everything went pretty smooth, they had a lot of people in town. I know, you drove through the park, I remember, obviously did, seemed like everybody was utilizing the fields, things went well, Longyear said it went well, so, nice to see that park fall, and hope to see it continuing to get full, and looks good.
Okay. Cheryl, fiscal officer report?
We have the fund status, and if you notice, it is a little lower than you would expect. We have to pay all these big bills from the well field and the water tower and then be reimbursed, so you're going to see it going up and down. You have the Judy collections for utilities and contacts in Mayor's court. I put in June and July revolving loan reports because everybody's July paying the survey. You have media come franchise beer court and a letter for Make Solar, along with the map, and I would ask everybody, if you ever want to know, please check the mailboxes that they got stuck in.
The question also, this map's obviously now public on that location, and there's a good question for you, Erica, also, do we have, does there, what's it, when the limits have to be redone, or do they, do they have exemption?
I'm not quite sure on that, but I know that they're not going to do anything in, like, there's no panels whatsoever that are going to be in the village limits.
Yet.
No, I, I, I mean, that's what they were, they've been saying, like, once they get it set, like, and I know that they have a meeting this Thursday at the high school.
Yep.
And that could be, this public hearing, so that could be a question that we ask them.
What time is that meeting?
The meeting is from 5 to 7 in the comments, for anyone that's interested, so Make Solar will be at the school on Thursday, the 20th of July.
I did, I did, I did express my concern over the, the yet comment, and they, they commented up and down that it's not going to be within the village limits. I do feel like we, like, I am going to go get more information, because they did release the territory maps, and then they also released the map where the panels are going to be. They released that, I think, a couple of days ago, so I think it would be good to go and get more information on Thursday.
Got a question about the maps, I saw a couple of them, it's still kind of, I said back to them, so. They actually up against the village limits, or?
They're up to the property, like the, yeah.
The Heilish Schmitz, kind of more the Tippin, I'm just saying.
They'll, they're leasing the entire Tippin farm, essentially, but their panel map shows that their panels actually aren't in the village limits, I guess that's part of the other.
I tried to read it.
They're, they're in the village, but they're not in the village limits, I mean, they're right?
They leased the ground.
Yeah, right.
What they have said is that they are going to do like natural habitat buffers.
I did talk with the township also, they're in the process of revising their verbiage for solar within the township to align with the state, which I think increases buffer lengths and that sort of stuff in certain, certain areas, I don't know what the standards are, but from what it sounds like, Make Solar has, basically, they're abiding by all of the state stuff anyway, so.
Yeah, they actually go, from everything they've told me, they go even actually above what the state guidelines are.
I know, I met John McCullough out of the school, and he came out, measured our solar panels, school has, and tried to get some verbiage for, that they wanted to incorporate with the township, so they're working on that.
Okay. Any other questions for Cheryl? Okay, Mayor's report, this Thursday is the Hubert Concert Series at the Hubert from 7:00 to 8:30, Heidi Paxton will be performing, I guess that's a local person, I don't know if I know her, but.
I think she's semi-local, I don't think she's ex-Russian.
Okay, so that's this Thursday, bring your chairs, I don't know if there'll be food provided, but there'll be concessions at the Hubert. And then the 27th of July, price cover open house from 7:00 to 9:00, I went through it a couple of weeks ago, and really impressive. So anyway, put that on your calendar, the 27th of July, 7:00 to 9:00, small refreshments, so. Anyway, that's all I have, any questions for me?
And the, and the solar meeting tomorrow?
Thursday, Thursday?
Yeah, I was going to mention that, but you already did, but that's from 5:00 to 8:00.
5:00 to 7:00.
5:00 to 7:00.
Yeah. I'd like to go to executive session personnel.
Okay. Second.
I went through that, but I'm curious, have we posted Troy's position?
No.
Yeah.
Did it formally get posted? I didn't.
Yeah.
It was discussed, but I don't know if it ever got posted.
Yeah, she, we wrote, she got a ad drawn up, and it's in the paper, and it closes July 31st.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Is that correct? Okay, I thought so.
We got an application?
I have not, well, I've got. So we've got one.
So we got to go to executive session. Roll call.
Martin?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
What are we doing?
Executive session.
Yes, definitely.
Martin?
Yes.
Klepper?
Yes.
Egling?
Yes.
Ellie, did you have anything?
Nope.
Okay. Just greasing your present.
Thank everybody for coming tonight, I don't think we're making any decisions, so Thank everybody for coming tonight. I don't think we're making any decisions, so. If you want to stick around outside, that's fine.